Is there a motion going to a closed session?
It's adjourned.
Second.
Be it resolved, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enter into closed meeting for the purpose of discussion of the following: Section 2.2-3711. Consult with the legal counsel, employee, or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. One, performance agreement, former Blacksburg Middle School property. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, dissonary, or resignation of specific officers, appointee, or employees of any public body. One, agency on aging, Montgomery Floyd Regional Library, New River Community College Board, personnel. Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Wiskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Six eyes.
We're in a closed session. Is there a motion to go out of closed session?
Some is.
Second. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act in whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with Virginia laws. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveyed to closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Madam Secretary, you call roll please.
Ms. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Wiskowski?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Six eyes.
That will be it.
Im invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, I turn it over to the county administrator.
Sir, if we could stand and observe a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us into the Pledge of Allegiances. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Everybody might notice that we are missing one of our colleagues here this evening. Supervisor Ben could not be with us tonight. She had a prearranged family event on the West Coast, so she apologizes profusely for not being here this evening, but she can't really be here from there, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, Mr. Chair, at this time, we'd like to ask the Board to come down front and participate in a recognition for the county's finance department, and I'll also ask Angie Hill, our finance director, to join us. Mr. Chair, we wanted to take an opportunity this evening to recognize the county's finance department. Each year, the county puts together what's called CAFRA, a Comprehensive Manual Financial Report. That is, the county's financial statements that state the status of the community in the mid-beach fiscal year. One of the things we do with that report each year is we submit it for consideration to the Government Finance Officer Association. That is, a group of government financial professionals that are across the United States and Canada. The highest achievement that the GFOWA can give a community is called the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Report, which means basically the county's financial statements are of high quality, they are complete in every manner, and they're very transparent in terms of sharing all the information that the community has to offer about their finances. I thought it would be very appropriate to recognize Angie tonight for her contributions, because this is an award to get every year is quite a challenge and quite an honor, but this is the thirty-second straight year that we've received this. Mr. Chair, I thought we might want to say a few words and present that to Angie and the county staff for all their homework. We have a board of chairs, and I don't know how much I should send you. This is Montgomery County. Another, they have all the competence and world-class finance department, and it's just really exciting to be standing next to you and the experience that you bring to this county. I do appreciate the force of your hand, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Board members, our next item this evening is a presentation, and I'm going to recognize Bob Poth, Sherry Wyatt, and Justin Sanders, who are going to make a presentation to the Board this evening on the Fleeger Building and the former Sheriff's Office Building. So, thank y'all for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Meadows. Thank you all for allowing us to come tonight and talk to you about this. My name is Sherry Wyatt, and I'm here with Bob Poth and Justin Sanders to discuss our concerns about the old county clerk's office, also known as the Fleeger Building or Courthouse Annex, and the Taylor Office Building, also known as the old sheriff's office. As curator of the Montgomery Museum, I would like to use information in the museum's collection and information gathered by local historian Roy Canode to give a brief background as to why these buildings are important. We last presented to the Board on this matter in 2011, and we wish to review some of the history of the Fleeger and Taylor Buildings. The Fleeger Building is perhaps the county's best surviving example of a late 19th century law office and a rare example of a late 19th century building in downtown Christiansburg. The oldest part of the Fleeger Building, the front lower section, is shown here, and it is even earlier constructed for the county clerk in 1812, 1813. And if you go in the building, you can tell that those are true brick walls. They're very thick. It is the oldest remaining government building in the county. The building housed the clerk's office until 1834, and it is shown on this 1826 map of William Ballard Preston was born at Smithfield Plantation in Blacksburg, and he had his law offices here in the 1830s before he became the United States Secretary of the Navy in Another very influential Virginian, Waller Red Staples, practiced law in the building beginning about 1850. He served as Virginia's Supreme Court Justice. Archer Fleeger purchased the property from the county in 1897 and soon expanded the building to the form where that we basically know today. He added the second floor and the decorative Eastlake-style porch, the double porch that was recently removed. Archer Fleeger had a distinguished career. He served on the Board of Supervisors, he was the Commonwealth's Attorney, he was a state senator, and he was the Virginia Supreme Court Justice. This 1908 photo is the earliest known of the building, and it shows it after the second floor and porch were added. By 1877, both Fleeger and Taylor, both the Fleeger and Taylor Buildings were in place, and they both appear on the 1877 map of Christiansburg. The Taylor Office Building, which is just to the right of the Fleeger Building, bears the name of the first attorney to occupy it, James C. Taylor. He served as Virginia's Attorney General. Including Taylor's, about a dozen law offices have used this building over the years, and some of them are listed here. A lot of well-known names. Now, turn the microphone over to Bob.
Thank you, Sherry. We'd like to point out that the Fleeger Building and the Taylor Building are on the in the Downtown Historic District, and before that district was formed, the Fleeger Building was put on the National Register of Historic Places. Also, in 2014, the Fleeger Building was listed on Preservation Virginia's Most Endangered Historic Sites. And so, the people of the Commonwealth that follow this will be following to see what happens to this building. So, there is interest in preserving this building. The exterior walls and some of the interior walls are solid brick walls, so it's structurally sound. There's been a lot of comments made about the condition of the brick. I'd like to read portions of an email that Mr. Mike Pulis of the Virginia Department of Historic Resources sent to Sherry Wyatt. Also, Mr. Pulis is the author of a book on 19th century brick architecture. So, "March 8, 2017. I finally had a chance to visit Fleeger Building yesterday for a close look. It's such a neat old building. I hope it can be saved. The brick walls are not in bad condition overall, but need some recording in limited areas and basically some cosmetic work. There are a handful of missing or badly deteriorated, under-fired bricks that need to be replaced. I would try to find any bricks that fit. If the repointing is done with the appropriate soft mortar, it does not require any great skill. After the missing bricks are replaced and repointing, it can be painted over using latex paint, which breathes fairly well. I don't think moisture is a big issue." And he goes on to say, "I'm available to come meet with folks at the building if they're interested." So, he's a resource that's valuable. Also, you'll probably recognize this from the Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. I was kind of surprised that the Fleeger Building is in this sheet and also another cover sheet later in the plan. We'd just like to point out some of the things that's in the plan about historical continuity, historically significant structures, and then it says that 63% of participants rated "Historic preservation is important" are very important, and another 24% as moderately important. So, you have 87% of the people that believe historic preservation is important. It's important for tourism. I won't take your time to read through all of these. On another page, like on page 44, it talks about the existing villages shall be maintained but encouraging preservation of historic structures. And I believe you'll agree that the county seat should fit in with that, not just the villages, but also we're looking at the county seat here, and I believe the Board could set an example of preserving these historic structures. And given that this comp plan was screened as a guidance document for your decisions, I'm confident that you will carefully review it before taking any action that would be detrimental to these two buildings. Several times a month, I either read or hear a comment about, "We shouldn't have tore down the old courthouse." I mean, and y'all heard it, you know. And I was a young married guy, wasn't out making presentations to board supervisors then, but you have a chance to rehabilitate these two structures and citizens, and the future's going to applaud your decision for doing that, I feel. Some suggestions we have is to engage the services of an architecture firm that's experienced in historic preservation to see what this would entail. You know, y'all work with great architectures. I mean, they did the courthouse and things, but somebody with some experience in historic preservation, I think, should be engaged at some point. Also, based on what I've read in the newspaper, you know, it's going to cost more to build a new building than it is to rehab the former sheriff's office. Take some of those funds that would be saved by rehabbing the sheriff's office and apply it towards doing some work on the Fleeger Building is one suggestion that we have. Explore the use of historic tax credits. Forty-five percent state and federal combined tax credits are available against the cost of rehab. There are people in higher-income tax brackets that will purchase those tax credits to help as a source of funding. Town of Blacksburg used that in remodeling the Blacksburg Motor Company Building, so something to explore. Talking about economic impact, but also just want to say, it's my understanding that at one point in time, the majority of the Board did not feel it was appropriate to spend $5,000 to study the old clerk's office or Fleeger Building to see if it was structurally sound. I feel so strongly about this, I won't put my money where the mouth is. I'll contribute to the county up to $7,500 personally, if you'll have some experience in historic preservation to look at these buildings. And I want to thank you for your time. Justin Sanders will finish up for us, and if you have any questions, we're here now or in the days ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Sanders. I'm the president of Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated. We are the nonprofit Main Street organization for Downtown Christiansburg. Professionally, I have worked in historic preservation for 12 years, worked for the National Trust for Historic Preservation, was on board of the Tennessee Preservation Trust, and currently serve as a community development planner in neighboring locality. I live here in Christiansburg, and I care very deeply about our downtown, as do the members of my Board and our constituents. I wanted to tell you a little bit about why Downtown Christiansburg is so interested in the future of these buildings, and it really goes directly to our vision for downtown. We see Downtown Christiansburg as a destination. We want it to be economically viable. We want it to be a vibrant central business district, and we want it to be a center of culture and community here in the New River Valley. And as such, I wanted to touch on a few impacts of historic buildings on communities that you might not think about. My colleagues from the Montgomery Museum have done an amazing job on talking about the history of the building, but we don't need to preserve history just for history's sake. There are lots of reasons to preserve our history. The first reason that I believe that historic buildings are important for our communities is historic authenticity. We've seen study after study that has been done on the impact that historically authentic downtowns have on the rebirth of communities. If you've been to Downtown Christiansburg, you know we have some amazing cultural resources on this block, right across the street of 4 West Main Street. We have an amazing building that Bob has meticulously restored over the years and brought that building back to life, so it is possible. We've lost a lot of buildings in Downtown Christiansburg as well, and members who come to our community tell us over and over again that, "Wow, downtown really does have some great bones, but there's not a lot going on here." So, we believe at Downtown Christiansburg that historic authenticity in downtown districts is crucial for this rebirth here in Downtown Christiansburg. We believe also that when we look at our regional and statewide partners who have done historic preservation projects in their downtowns, they have seen those results. People want to be in these communities. They want to invest their money in these communities. They want to come downtown and stay downtown. So, we believe that historic buildings are a great backdrop to people who want to live, work, and play in their communities. We also believe in the economic impact of historic preservation, and we believe in this because, again, that investment that other people will bring into the community if they see a positive step forward in saving historic places. But historic preservation jobs are better paid, they're more stable, and we can use historic preservation as an opportunity to educate our generations of future tradespeople on the work on these historic structures. We also have evidence by the National Trust for Historic Preservation and several independent firms that guarantee that money that is spent on historic properties stays in the community. These are our friends and our neighbors that will be working on these projects and not a firm out of the state or out of the region that would benefit. We also believe that historic preservation is the most sustainable thing we can do for future generations. You think about all of the time, all of the materials, all of the energy that was used to construct these buildings in the first place. If the buildings are demolished, all of those resources are going to go into a landfill, and more resources will be used to construct new buildings. So, it's no shock that as early as 1975, the National Trust for Historic Preservation said, "The greenest building is the building that's already built." And we see with new technologies that these buildings can be as efficient as their modern counterparts. With the addition of exterior storm windows and new insulation and new building techniques that we've learned over the years of restoring these buildings, these buildings can and are energy efficient. So, the argument that a building that is 100 years old can't be as efficient as a new one really doesn't hold up when you look at the evidence. We also believe that sustainability is the new wave, and this Board has the opportunity in its decision to set a precedent going forward for future government buildings in Montgomery County and in the region as well, and be a leader in taking this challenge. And lastly, it speaks more to what my colleagues were talking about, about the history of this space, but we believe at Downtown Christiansburg, and we believe in the historic preservation community, that we are merely stewards of buildings and stewards of history. And we believe that we have a great responsibility to restore and save buildings for future generations. We've seen over and over again that uses have shelf life. It won't always be a magistrate's office. We have to think about 50, 100 years from now, and when that use has expired, we still won't have the building if they're demolished. So, we have a responsibility for future generations to take a bold step and save these buildings and talk about our history. So, we see the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, Montgomery County staff, as partners with us as we work to reintegrate Downtown Christiansburg into the conversation. Our community does not have a dead heart at its center. Our downtown is thriving. There's a lot of exciting potential on the horizon, and this building is waiting for a new use, so I hope you all consider that as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Can we get copies of all that? What that was presented? Can you get copies of?
We've got it. We'll send that out to the Board after.
Thank you.
Can you all also make sure your contact information is included, please?
Thank you.
Moving into public hearing, proposed ordinance, amendment, Chapter 3, entitled Anals, Section 3-36. Anybody signed it?
Yes, certainly. No one signed up for this public?
No one has signed up for the public address. If you'd like to come forth, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Now, this is for the public hearing on the proposed ordinance?
Seeing none, we will close that section. Now, we're going to the public address.
Yes, sir. Now, we're in public address.
Now, we're going to the public address.
We do have one person, Ms. Joanna Hicks, has signed up to speak this evening. If you'll please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yes. My name is Johanna Hicks. I live here in Christiansburg, six or seven and a half South Franklin Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. I have lived here for 18 years. I'm from the south of America, South America, Colombia, so I was not born here in North America, but I came over here, I made my life here in Christiansburg, Virginia. I love it here, and I plan to stay for a long, long time, probably until I die. So, I have my four kids here, and I'm living in Colombia, in a small town called Philandia in Colombia. I love our, not just our culture, but how we keep the old buildings alive. And I, from that town where I came from, and I was raised, that those buildings are 300, 400 years old, and they're still preserved up to today, and people from all over the world come down there to see them, and they're just an amazing thing to see because they just show us how hard people worked in the past to make them be what they are today, and they just show us where, you know, from where we came from. So, I think that's important to keep. I wasn't planning to talk today, so this is kind of like the, I'm sorry. But anyway, we own several buildings here in Christiansburg, some in downtown, one is the Keatinghurst Building, which is some of our streeting now. We own Depot Street, and we own one on College Street, which used to be Dr. Meyer's Building. And so, we want to preserve buildings like that because they show us, you know, what Christiansburg is about. You know, Christiansburg wasn't brand-new buildings. It was old buildings, and now that's what we want to preserve. But anyway, so I would really like to see those old buildings to be there and to be maintained, and hopefully to see new porches on the Fleeger Building and the other building to just to be able to be fixed up. I think our kids need that. I think our future needs that, and so I think you guys really need to think about this because whatever decision you make right now is going to affect the future of what Christiansburg is going to be down the road. So, I thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have signed up, but I was just going to say if anyone else would like to speak on this, under public address this evening, you have five minutes if you want to come forth and state your name and address.
Seeing none, we will close the public address. Addendum?
No addendum this evening, sir.
Have no addendum. Is there a motion for consent agenda?
Seven.
Or second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Wiskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demott?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Six eyes.
Sure. Mr. Chair and Board members, our first item of new business this evening is Virginia Tech issuance of revenue bonds. This is something that needs to be reviewed and approved by the Board. The Economic Development Authority would be issuing up to $104 million, $120,000 of revenue bonds to finance the acquisition, construction, development, equipping, renovation, and redevelopment cost of specified capital projects at the Virginia Tech Foundation. Marty, you may want to, if I could ask Marty, who's the attorney, to comment. This has no effect on the county's debt capacity, bond ratings. We're simply acting as a, the EDA's simply acting as a pass-through. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The EDA nor the county has any liability. Before the EDA can finalize this, the Board has to authorize the EDA to do the transaction. So, that's the purpose of this resolution.
Mr. Chair, there is a resolution... Mr. Chair, there is a resolution for you to consider this evening, and.
And also, if there's any questions concerning the projects or even the process, I represent the foundation is here, just in case.
A move to resolution. I'll second.
I do have a comment, I guess, or a concern. When we start seeing, as I read this, we start looking at a very large structure, but we're going to be talking about something that's not going to be taxed potentially, unless there are long-term leases. And, you know, as someone who's concerned about the expansion of the foundation and property that's being owned that's not taxable, I was wondering if they would address the board in regards to if there could be a reach in agreement where short-term leases would be affected the same way that long-term leases are, or how the foundation intends to address some of these issues? Because I'm concerned that the foundation continues and continues to acquire more and more real estate, and we have so much real estate in Montgomery County, not just with Virginia Tech, but with the National Forest, that is not taxable. So I would like to hear just how they tend to address that, especially when we're seeing the growth of Virginia Tech and all the demands on our community that are being made. And at the same time, if they're not paying real estate taxes, and I'm a developer across the street, how am I supposed to compete with somebody who's not having to pay real estate taxes and I am? So it's just.
How are you? I brought Carrie Woodring with me. She's a real estate, I'm an assistant treasurer of Virginia Tech. Do you want to try and give her a chat?
Yeah, the properties, where this new building is being built is on land that is already currently owned.
Thank you.
Where this building is being built is on land that is already currently owned by the Virginia Tech Foundation. We're actually going to be tearing down two smaller buildings to make room for this bigger building. The, the non-university tenants do pay taxes. It's based on a formula that the, the county tax assessor, Tom Bland, does. I could not explain that formula to you.
And my question is, in regards to that, it's my understanding, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, it's based on the years of the lease.
The under-state law.
Under-state law. And so if, it's a short lease, if it's a year lease, there's almost no taxes that are paid on it. If it's a two-year lease. If it's a 20-year lease, they're paying full taxes as I, if I remember my numbers correctly. But almost no signs of 20-year lease.
From our perspective, I want the longest lease we can get, and it's my goal to make those retail tenant leases long. I usually only have, I go for 10-year lease. If I can get 20, I'm going to go for that. I don't normally do one-year leases for the foundation. It's not in our best interest to sign that short of a term lease with retail tenant. It doesn't make sense from our financial perspective. So our office is going for the longer-term leases.
How, what percentages of your leases are more than five years?
In my portfolio.
Well, and I guess especially in the ones in Montgomery County. And I know that there are some properties that are owned outside of that.
I do not represent, I don't manage the CRC properties, but on the foundation side, the ones that are under my jurisdiction within the foundation, I think I have two leases, and it's only because I inherited them, that are shorter than, that are a year lease. They expire, I believe, in January and December of 2020, but they were inherited when we bought it. When I look to do a new lease, I'm going to look for at least a five-year term.
Would you be agreeable to extend this, to change it to no leases shorter than five years?
I would not be willing to do that without speaking with the foundation, our CEO, Dr. Dooley. What I can say is, from our perspective, on a retail lease, it does not make sense for us to do a five-year or less term, and we ask for 10 years.
And I like that I understand that, but it would, for me, I'd love to see it in writing, because it's the lawyer in me. Put it in writing, if that's what you're hoping to do, if that's your goal, five years, maybe no more than 50% of the leases are, you know, five years, and maybe the other 50% are 10-year leases. That would make me feel a lot more comfortable when we're talking about some of the tax issues that we face on this board and that we'll face in the future. And I'm only speaking for myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say that, you know, we know, we all know that Virginia Tech is the economic engine for Montgomery County, and that's why most of us are here. But I think Chris has a very valid point in that the Jefferson National Forest, Virginia Tech itself, and the foundation, all of these are properties that, you know, we can't get the kind of tax revenue that we really need for our county with, especially with the growth. And it's been sort of a, no one really wants to talk about it, but also another aspect of the whole situation is, and I know you're not in charge of this, but the CRC competes directly against us for economic development. So when we try to diversify our tax base as a county, and we're so limited with real estate tax being the big thing and personal property tax, and we're competing out there to try to bring economic development in, really, our economic, you know, engine is Virginia Tech. And I mean, I can speak for, I mean, I'm a hokey, two degrees, but I personally, and I don't know if this could ever, ever really happen, I would like to see a conversation where maybe there could be some back-and-forth between Virginia Tech, the foundation, and local elected officials about this kind of thing, because I see us as we're all in it together and we're partners. But sometimes, I'm going to be honest, we feel like an unequal partner, even though we know we're all here pretty much because of Virginia Tech. So I just want to put that out there as something that is talked about, but no one really talks about it out front, because no one wants to ruffle any feathers. So there you go.
Well, I would say that the foundation would be open to that.
Yeah.
A conversation, absolutely.
I think it's above our pay grade. Dr. Dooley and Dr. Sands, but we'll report that back.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to add a little bit to what Mary said, just an example, more or less. Our school system gets 70% of our budget, and yes, Virginia Tech is growing in this community, but it's also, when we do things like this and don't get the tax money, we can't help the schools as much as they want, yet, you know, we have more kids coming in because of Virginia Tech. And that's just one of the things that we look at, especially during budget season. And it's, it's difficult, you know?
Yeah, I've also heard that, you know, that Virginia Tech as a creator of a lot of opportunities and the foundation too, yes, you bring in more people to our county, they get good-paying jobs, they buy homes, they pay taxes, and that, and that is good, but just as Supervisor Shepherd said, there are also kind of spin-off costs when you have that, and our schools are definitely one of them. But we have other costs too, other things that we have to maintain in the county for the taxpayers, and to keep going back to our homeowners and laying the burden on them, and it should be shared a little bit more, certainly more than what it is. But I don't think anybody here is saying we don't, we don't appreciate Virginia Tech and we don't appreciate the foundation. We really do. We really do appreciate them. But it would be good to have that conversation so that things could just seem more equitable.
So would you like us to ask Dr. Dooley to reach out? Is that what you're asking?
I would.
I talked to Dr. Dooley fairly often. If you'll convey that back to him, I'll also reach out to him as well, and we'll get a time set up.
We'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I know there was a motion and a second. Was there, do y'all have a deadline that this needs to be passed, within two weeks, three weeks? Could it survive until our next, our first meeting in August so we could see if you could agree to the terms of having at least a higher percentage of five-year leases and 10-year leases and see about, is that a possibility?
It is. We're not planning to sell until September, but we have to go visit all of these various localities, which we're in the process of doing. You said, beginning of August?
It would be our first meeting and that would be.
August 12.
12.
Yeah.
I just want to say, I do completely relate and understand with, with what my colleagues are saying, and do think that it would be very advantageous, not just to Montgomery County, but also to Virginia Tech, to have a meeting of the minds as such. But for our community, dealing with managing growth is really a beautiful problem to have. And so I know that there's some frustration sometimes on our side as, as we lose tax property off the tax rolls or as the foundation grows, but that comes with the advantage too, that it means that our community is growing and it's up to us to manage that growth. So I do think it's important to put, put our minds together and talk about ways that we can work to benefit each other, because we do very much have a symbiotic relationship. You guys can't do anything without, you know, affecting us and vice versa. And so I think opening those avenues of conversation is very important.
So we have a motion and a second, so we either have to have them withdrawn, right? Or do something?
I was wondering if you would consider either withdrawing the motions or we could table it until the first meeting in August, either one of those, and that way it would give them the opportunity to be able to get some information and maybe come up with some answers. And I like the fact that we're having this dialogue. I know sometimes I might come across as an attorney, because that's, again, what I am. Apologize if I was a little bit on the more caustic side, but it's, sometimes it is frustrating as someone who's lived here all his life and knows that some of the developers that are competing against you guys. And it's, it's hard to see that and to try to put everybody on a level playing field would be helpful.
Well, if you table it, then you're putting a date on it, and that might help with their planning, right? What, I mean, might work.
I would say that we'll certainly do whatever you want, if you want us to come back. I think the financing is probably not the issue. You know, I think we can assure you that we can set up a time to have, you know, John Dooley or President Sands come in and talk to you. And you can use this as a, as a chip to make sure that that happens, or you can prove it, you know, scouts honor. So that's how you guys would like to proceed.
What do you think?
I'd like to see it tabled, and that way we can all talk and we're all together.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes. So moved.
You gotta remove that one.
No, I think he can make that motion, correct?
Yeah, that'd be a substitute motion. Neither be second.
I'll second that.
And is that till August 12, Chris?
Yes, our first meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on this?
We do.
We have to.
So be clear, just to be real clear. You want to talk to Dr. Dooley or Dr. Sands, but more importantly, what you're mostly interested in is a commitment from the foundation to make sure the retail leases in this new building, at least a percentage, we'll have to talk that through, five years or greater.
Yes.
Is that in?
That's what I'm looking to hear. I don't want to speak for everybody else.
No, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, motion and second. Any more discussion? No. Ready to vote? Madam Secretary?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Caskin?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Mrs. to table to August 12.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Board members, our next item under new business this evening is to schedule a public hearing for the proposed boundary adjustment agreement with the Town of Christiansburg related to falling branch corporate park phase two.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Caskin?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Board members, item C on new business this evening is to schedule a public hearing for the Board of Supervisors intent to convey a sidewalk easement to the Town of Christiansburg. This involves a sidewalk project that will be built in front of this property here on Monroe Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do want to say something about this. I think that it is absolutely wonderful that the Town of Christiansburg is looking at building sidewalks along that corridor. I've seen many people walking in, you know, ankle-high grass or through weeds if the grass gets too high in that area, because they're using it as a corridor to go to work or to go to the doctor or to get food. And so I think it's very important that that pathway be established. I'm glad that we are considering doing this this evening.
And we will, I will say if this, if the board ultimately conveys the easement, that we'll be working with our buildings and grounds staff to incorporate the improvements that are made in front of the building to enhance the aesthetics of it as well, so.
Nice.
Be a win-win.
There's already a bus shelter there, isn't there?
There is. There is. But no sidewalk.
No sidewalk.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Caskin?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Item D this evening, Board members, under new business is county capital fund appropriation and transfer of funds for combined garage and maintenance facility. We've had two extended work sessions over the last several months talking about county capital projects. This is a resolution to appropriate an additional $184,399 to the funds, I'm sorry, appropriate 184,399 from general fund balance, also transfers previously appropriated funds of $2,815,601 for money set aside for future county capital projects for a total of $3 million, which will be used to construct the garage and maintenance facilities for the county. Did I get that right? Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion? So moved?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Craig, just for clarification, can you explain where this is proposed to be located?
We, the county owns property, it's interesting we're discussing this tonight, when Bob's here. This is actually Bob's family's former business property back here behind the government center where Poff Construction was located for a number of years. The county purchased that property, I guess it was prior to my time, it was 2008 or 2009, for future expansion. Over the years, we have used it for storage. We still have our existing buildings and grounds staff back there, but we are in dire need of a new garage facility. We need to upgrade the facilities for buildings and grounds, and this construction will be done on county-owned property, which is immediately behind this property here on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to commend the supervisors that came before me that had foresight to buy that property. Mary was on the board, I believe, at that point in time, but they had some vision. All you have to do is go on Google Earth and look at our current maintenance building and the roof, and you will see why we need to change that, or go out and visit the metal building that is in desperate need of being replaced. So I'd just like to point that out, that some supervisors before us had some foresight.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Caskin?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Mr. Chair, the next item is county capital funds appropriation and transfer of funds for another project that we've discussed recently, and this is the Creed Fields Project down in the Shawsville area. This appropriation appropriates $1,284,972 for this project. A portion of that money is coming from year-end general fund balance, a portion is coming from undesignated prior-year general fund balance, a portion is coming from designated debt service fund balance from previous savings. That's what makes up the $1,284,972. The resolution also transfers previously appropriated funds of $1,292,028 from money set aside for future park projects to this particular project. So the total estimated cost that this resolution will address tonight is $2,577,000. And these are for ball fields and improvements at the former Shawsville Elementary School site in Shawsville. The county currently has two ball fields there. This will involve improvements of that area and also construction of new fields.
I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to go on and say that this is just a good use of some beautiful property. It does have an issue with flooding, but thanks to our architects and designers, they, I believe, have solved that problem where it's going to be less of an impact if it does occur. And it certainly is well... Will be well-used in the Shawsville area. I think all of us see the need for more parks and rec in the county. Everywhere you look, you've got kids out there playing soccer and baseball and other sports and it's something we want to encourage in an age of let's just sit on the couch and play video games or something that doesn't involve any kind of physical activity. So this is a win-win, I think, for all of us. And I think by naming it after a former supervisor of District C and a guy that really looked out for his district, I think is really great.
And I'll say as a representative to our board from the Parks and Recreation Commission, we very joyfully look forward to the challenge of programming additional fields. I don't think we're going to have any difficulties in getting kids onto these new fields. The Parks and Rec Commission wanted me to convey their incredible support for moving forward on this.
Any more discussion?
Hopefully with more parks to come. Soon.
Fingers crossed.
Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Mr. Chair and board members, our last item of new business this evening is a general fund appropriation for a broadband infrastructure study. As you're well aware, we have been actively involved in interviewing consultants and working towards the development of a broadband infrastructure study that will assess our broadband capabilities in the county. This is an appropriation for $68,500. That funding will be accomplished through three funding sources. We've received a grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development for $30,000. The city of Radford is contributing $7,000 and the county's contribution, which is what we're asking for in appropriation tonight, is $31,500. So the total appropriation is $68,500.
So moved?
Second. It's about time.
Got to get moving.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I would second that it's about time. And I think this is something that we hear more and more about. All the counties around us seem to be involved in programs and they're making that public and it kind of looks like we've been doing nothing, but I assure you, we have been discussing this and now we're taking a giant step forward and as soon as we identify the areas, hopefully we're going to get going too and you're going to see some progress in that. Broadband is needed, not just for the kids at school, but for a lot of businesses that we hope to grow in this county. So it's definitely that first giant step. I think we just had the 50th anniversary of the moon landing, so we... Maybe we can just use that slogan.
Any more discussion?
Well, if we landed on the moon, we should be able to do this, don't you think?
I think.
I mean, they were talking to each other.
Madam... Call roll please.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Good job. County attorneys report.
I have no report, Mr. Chair. I just lay down.
Laying down. Thank you, sir. County administrator.
Mr. Chair and board members, I just want to say thanks tonight because I just made a note as we went down through those items of new business and actions previously this evening. Through your actions tonight, you've recognized the county's finance department and staff with the appropriations you've made for facilities and improvements. You're recognizing the general services, Parks and Recreation and Economic Development staff. And just as county administrator, I appreciate the efforts this board makes to provide investments in our community, provide investments that benefit our citizens and our employees. I know that there's going to be further discussion on the properties on Franklin Street. We will certainly provide any information we can to the board on that and we'll work with the chair and vice chair to have that information come back at a future meeting. And again, appreciate you guys being here tonight to share the history and information with us. And that's all I have.
They do nothing exciting this weekend. Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, just a couple of things. First of all, if you get your VACO newsletter, there is a link now to the conflict of interest training that we all have to take as local elected officials. Now, I have not tested out the link, but as of July 1st, we're all responsible for doing that every two years. I wanted to go back to talk a little bit about Virginia Tech. You know, we have worked together with Virginia Tech and I know the police department and the sheriff's department and the two towns work together really well. But some projects that we have worked on successfully with Virginia Tech include the Virginia Tech Montgomery County Airport, the Executive Airport. We worked together on trying to find land for the recently built Price's Fork Elementary School. Virginia Tech helped us out there. We're members of the Water Authority. Virginia Tech supported us doing that. And when they needed support down in, I think it was Roanoke, where we all went down to talk about the South Gate Exchange when they were trying to get that done, we supported them that way. So I think there's a lot that, you know, can be accomplished with, you know, some communication and some understanding back and forth. The other thing I wanted to mention is I'm very interested in tonight's presentation about bowl buildings. You know, I appreciate history and, you know, recently I was in Whitfield for a meeting where they had redone an old hotel for the Lisbeth Bowling Wilson Hotel. And they also have a museum across the street. And I do think smaller towns, a lot of times, do attract people that really want to look at history. So I'm really interested in what you all presented and I'm looking forward to any other information. And I think, Bob, your offer of $7,500 is a significant offer. So I would be interested in any other information we might be able to get or you all might be able to share, particularly the historic tax credits. I'm not sure how that works. Can we get information on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All righty. And let me see, that's it. Those are my three things.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
I would just like to reiterate, I really appreciate the financial office doing the great work that they do. And I know a lot of the citizens of this county don't realize exactly what they do and how hard they do work, but they're well-deserved of that award. And I appreciate the presentation on those buildings. I had no idea that one was that old. That's unreal. But anyway, and all the information that you gave me coming tonight.
Supervisor Tuck.
One, we had a fellow who made us an offer, $7,500, and I'm a big believer in somebody makes an offer. I would love to accept that. And I, as the county administrator, you may have recalled that number of $5,000 came from Mr. Murphy was before us and it wasn't off... He... It was... It wasn't a prepared remark. He said around $5,000. There's an email that I've received late this afternoon that says that probably that number is around $7,500. And if we could get a price and find out what it would cost to fix that building and preserve a building that's been there for 200 years, at least explore it. And especially when it... And I know some of my supervisors, fellow supervisors, were concerned about throwing away taxpayer money, but now we're throwing away somebody else's money who's a volunteer. And so...
Jeff looking at home.
But I think this is, one, it speaks to Mr. Poff, but it's a wonderful opportunity for us to find out. You know, what if we were able to put a good roof on that, but maybe not use the second floor, but use the first floor for the magistrate's office and preserve... Let court services go into the old sheriff's office, maybe not have to put an elevator into the sheriff's office. There may be some creative things that we can do. And I would encourage my fellow supervisors that if we could put this on the agenda to accept Mr. Poff's, or I'm willing to vote tonight, I know it wasn't on our agenda to accept that offer, but if not, put it on our first meeting in August to move forward with that. Thank you.
Supervisor...
Two items while we're still on the Poff offer. Thank you very much for that. I am... Even though our initial vote was to look at putting up something different, I am willing to consider other options. And I know in speaking with Mr. Poff, he had suggested the same thing that Supervisor Tuck said, that maybe the magistrate's office could be put in a remodeled first floor of that building. So I don't think we're hard and fast-set on anything yet that we can't consider making some tweaks or some changes, so I would be willing to look into that. But I also don't want to beat it to death for a long period of time. I would like to see it brought up August 12th and let's move on something. Let's move in one direction or the other. But we got to get a new magistrate's office and that seems to be the best location in that area, so we got to look out for our police officers. What they're dealing with now is not just inconvenient, it's not really safe, so we need to fix that. My other issue is I'd like you all to consider... I know there's been some talk of, and we earlier this year requested VDOT to make Mount Tabor Road a non-throughway for tractor-trailers. We've got a couple other roads in the county that probably would fall underneath that and I would like to suggest to you in my district, which actually goes out of my district, but Route 603, which is North Fork Road, be considered. If not, a ban on through tractor-trailers, maybe some kind of limitation on the size trucks that are going through. Currently, right now, VDOT, and I appreciate what they've done, they've placed a sign saying that Route 603 is not recommended for tractor-trailers, but I've gotten several complaints from citizens that say that tractor-trailers are using that road and there are some curves there on that road, if you've ever ridden it, that they have to cross the center line to make the corner on a full-size tractor-trailer. Now, there is a restaurant that sits in the middle of it. I'm sure that can be serviced by a smaller tractor-trailer, you know, like a 28-foot trailer or whatever, and I'm sure they have them. But what I'm suggesting is that we ask VDOT to look into maybe the accident rate. They have had some horrific tractor-trailer wrecks there, especially in that one curve that is below the Italian Kitchen Restaurant. And when it blocks up that road, there are no other routes. I mean, you have to drive all the way back to Christiansburg to get into another route, so it's definitely something worth looking into. And Meadow Creek Road, for that matter, is another one in your district.
We're working on it now.
Okay. Very good. So that, I mean, we have several of them that are worthy of consideration and I'd like to throw North Fork Road out there to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair DeMoss.
I just have a couple of things. I do want to echo what everybody is saying and being supportive of looking into the very generous offer made by Mr. Poff. And then also I want to echo what Supervisor Fitchakowski said about moving quickly. Not moving quickly without thoroughly researching, but moving quickly as in we want to keep this moving forward and not lose it along the wayside. So I definitely think it's fine to investigate options, especially with such generous offers, but I also want to move forward on whatever decision we end up making ultimately. And then I also wanted to take just a minute to congratulate some young ladies in our community, and this is coming from the Parks and Rec Department. We had pretty excellent showings at the 10U level and the 12U level, so that would be our 10 and under young ladies and our 12 and under young ladies playing softball. The 12U All-Stars are back-to-back district champions and they will look to repeat again next year as they hopefully will earn a second shot at state titles. They fell just short this year, but are the district champions again. The 10U All-Stars did get to play in the state champion game. They played against Manassas, so they played against a team that comes from an extremely large area and also with a larger economic base, a lot more people, larger economic base. And our team did a great job. They came in second place in the state and of course we'll send them back again next year, hopefully with the first place in the state. But please congratulate our Parks and Rec staff and pass on the congratulations to those two teams of young ladies and the excellent job they did representing Montgomery County. That's it.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I want to thank my fellow board members for moving this far with the county garage and the general services building. They deserve more than what they got now and I appreciate Carol and Craig and the staff for working on this, getting this together. I know people say, well, you know, you got this and you have that, but I'm like Supervisor Chris or Tuck here, go down there and look at the building that they have. It's in bad shape. As far as the Mr. Poff's offer, I appreciate that, I really do. And as far as I know, we're all keeping an open mind on the buildings. I mean, you had a little discussion today about my thoughts of it and I appreciate you calling me. And I would like to thank the financial department for their excellent work. As I stated before, the citizen Montgomery County can be proud of that department and the county employees as a whole. They work hard and I do appreciate it. And one more thing, then I'll hang up. I want to tell the sheriff in the back, I appreciate the deputies and all what they do every day, every night. I appreciate each and every one of them and thank you for the hard work. That's all. Mean it, Jerry.